To order, today is June 12th. The zoning board of appeals commissioned for the town of Woodbridge. First, I just want to say I'm sorry to the applicant that was here last month. I'm sorry, it's our mistake and that wasn't called for. So, the first public hearing is Mark and Tiffany Gerlone, 1194 Racebrook Road. Yes, please sign in.
Hello, my name is Robert White. I am the owner and principal of Rob White Architect and I'm here on behalf of my client, Mark and Tiffany Gerlone of 1194 Racebrook Road for a variance for a porch addition. The request is in two parts and so one request is for the front yard setback and I may have a question in clarification for the board and not sure if there's an accuracy or could just be a clarification on the terminology. The front yard, the actual setback distance we're looking for is the 42.5 and I believe if I understand the way the language, the second one's written, that would mean there's a variance of 32.5 and that may need clarification. The survey maps that you're holding should have, I believe, a 43.5 distance to that closest porch from the front yard. The second request is to the center line of the state road, Racebrook Road, and that requires the 125, so we're asking for a setback of 100.5 feet which then produces a variance of 24.5 feet. So I may just ask that the commission or board clarify that. So you have a package now of the porch addition which is viewed from the north or right side of the house viewed from Racebrook Road. In addition, I have other images of the house which I can also take you to work. This is just, I know a lot of people know this house, but it's just helpful to understand.
Thank you.
So these are additional pictures from the ones clean and included, just of the existing house. So, looking at the top left picture of the sheet I just handed out, that is currently the kitchen and in summary, basically this project came to my office as an expansion of the kitchen space which you can see the interior on the bottom right picture. So the door in the bottom right leads to the back of the house which you see then on the bottom left picture. And the top right is just a view of the back of the house for information mostly. The project came to my office as Mark and Tiffany wanted to improve this old kitchen and entry for their family and basically asked me to plan a roughly 11 by 11 foot addition, you know, based upon the space available. These sketches and you can see just all that's important is kind of the blue, these were options our office considered. So this graphically is what the owners came to me. So this is a partial floor plan. The front of the house is my right hand. And I'll get up just in case you have any questions. So in the process of looking, these are sketches of options we looked at. We looked at doing a smaller addition and then lastly, we looked at the current plan which is to actually not build a kitchen addition and upon my recommendation, to just put the kitchen back in the big room that's on the back. There's a lot of area in this house, it's just like older homes, it's grown organically. And while there's an open porch here that is part of our request, the actual addition is about four feet, four inches by eight feet. That's the actual hard enclosed building and in working with my client, I got them to realize this is a better floor plan and anything we do would require variance because the front yard setback is two feet from the very back of that house. The hardship is that the house predates every zoning reg documented in the Woodbridge Historic Book as the majority of the house being established in 1790, clearly predating the regs that came in the 20th century and therefore putting, you know, basically the entire house in the front yard. And then in addition, you know, it's on a state road which is why we have the setback from the center line. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any information for us? Terrence?
Well, this is the kind of thing that we've seen a bit on our local roads where, you know, I can't call the builder, but a foot and a half of this entire house is a little quiet front yard. So, you know, to almost, you know, almost to repaint this thing requires only that. And so that's the hardship, you know, in and of itself. And I don't think the fact that this four foot by six foot or eight foot open porch that really tends to fill in the body, the mass of the building, you know, represents a much of an increasing in non-conformity that it certainly does, but, you know, because there's a structure which is that it's the new pantry on one side and where the existing kitchen is on the other side, we're squaring off the building.
Yeah, I may want to just clarify that and I appreciate the comment. The space that is the bump out in your original package that went with the application, the left picture, and both pictures show the area, the porches to infill. So on the floor plan where it says new pantry, that is in fact an existing bathroom. So that is an existing structure. The existing kitchen is the larger of the shed. The right picture is intended to clarify, and I should clarify formally, that all the concrete walk stoop, which is a very large stoop, I mean, it's the width of the kitchen out, so it's 11 feet by three and a half feet out and it's up, you know, 18 inches. The bulkhead basement entry and the whole concrete pad will be removed and there'll be a walkway of stepping stones for now. There is a current little concrete walk, but part of my job, not only to produce the good design, is I am a historic preservationist and this is a very sensitive, very public view of the house. In addition to them just having a proper entry, I mean, that's what the interior pictures to show is just to, the door right now goes into their kitchen. So there is an effort on our part to work with the existing forms. The new porch literally follows the shed of the bump out and it follows the height, pitch, and extent out horizontally. So it's only, you know, it's only a four foot wide porch, it's not a big porch, and to essentially clean up this elevation that's on the corner of Milan and Racebrook.
So would it be safe to assure the board that the addition would not increase the footprint any further than the present smaller bump out as you described?
That is correct. It will not extend out further past, in other words, the roof edge, the rake, or the eve line, not the rake line, but the eve line that you see here will be continuous across. We won't make the, we will not bump out four inches. The point is, is that we literally are working with what forms we can salvage and tie together to look a little more harmonious and, you know, architecturally complete and in the process getting rid of all the concrete collection of forms that have grown over the years.
And that only leaves the steps to that.
Yep.
Which, under our zoning regulations, are part of a structure and so as long as we're speaking for the record, that we should note that the steps too would go out further than that little four foot addition.
Yes.
But only to the extent that it needs to make degress.
Right. Right. Yeah, we anticipate there's going to be two steps. Obviously, you know, you can also graze up the grade so, you know, put a tiny bit there, but it's only 18 inches.
Right, right.
Just point of order, we didn't, I didn't seat the alternates, but before we vote, we can do it after the hearing or?
Obviously, yeah.
Want to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have two.
So again, obviously, nobody can replace Edie Locke here, so Spencer, if you please, and then, what's his name? Mr. Levine?
Right.
It's not available tonight, so Walden.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Any other information you want to provide us with?
No, I think that's.
That's good. Very thorough.
The only question I would have, which is going to be odd, is why is it only extended by just a few inches? Why not that whole space where that concrete thing is, is it's already within kind of the footprint of the house, if you will? So I presume from a design standpoint that?
Right, like most zoning boards, like, and obviously I do in every design project, I started with the 11 by 11, you know, the bigger impact, it produces a much bigger shed that comes out 11 feet, four, 11 feet back from the house. And what happened is, in most cases, the need to add isn't always literally where it exists now. And obviously, historically, kitchen wouldn't have been on, you know, would have been in the back of the house, if not even in the house, you know? More historically, would have been in an Oldell in the back of this house. It just doesn't make sense. And in reviewing this carefully and, you know, so the three schemes I reviewed with Mark and Tiffany Gerlone, it was pretty clear to all of us right away that the square footage they asked me to add really wasn't needed. The first floor was large enough to just shuffle rooms around and literally just get a proper entrance on the side of the house. So that original 11 by 11 request, as you say, to literally take over where all the concrete was, because that was the directive to me, was mostly going to be mudroom, you know, pantry, just a rival with the kitchen kind of right there. So, you know, improvement on the kitchen more so than enlarging it. But we're just, the reality is, I replanned the inside of the house. We changed the dining room, living room, kitchen location without any articulation of the exterior, you know, exterior walls and just, you know, the only reason for the little actual enclosed addition, the four foot by eight inches, is because there's a timber post there. And whenever the kitchen was added at some point, it just landed where it is with no regard to the actual timber post in the old historic frame. So it's about keeping that.
Okay, so they wouldn't come back in the future and say, okay, now we can fill in this spot. So from a design standpoint?
Well, I can't guarantee that I'm coming back with somebody else, but they would go in front of the board like anybody else again, so.
No, but I'm just saying, from the standpoint of design and what you were able to accomplish architecturally, this is an optimum design.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they truly love the antique home. They've been in there since, when was it, 2009? I think they purchased it. So they're, they are slowly in pieces, going to be restoring mostly interior. This, to my knowledge, is the only exterior, exterior project on their mind, so.
I do believe that what we're seeing here is that, you know, we used to live in our homes a bit more formally than we do today. You know, this, clearly this center fireplace with rooms on the side, you know, clearly the, you know, the family room and den may have, before the kitchen, been, you know, a formal living room. And you can see how, you know, you're reworking the interior to have this, this family room which, where the kitchen is now, was proposed to be, you know, was a much later add-on because that wouldn't have been efficient to eat.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know for sure. The owners tell me there was some gun club in Woodbridge that actually used to use and that was their meeting room.
It was called the Woodbridge Hunt Club and we have a subdivision.
Yeah, the room's very, it's very different from the rest of the house right now. Yeah, but that's what they told me, yes.
The now known as Fox Den Way, by the way, the gun club.
See the inside before they change?
It's kind of 1970s-ish.
Well, I think we have no further comments or questions at this point. And when we're all done listening to the others, we will deliberate and come up with a decision.
Okay, thank you.
More than welcome to stay. Thank you. Boris Marek and Mariam Corjun, 47 Beecher Road.
I am Boris Marek. I'm resident of Woodbridge, 47 Beecher Road. Maybe you know this yellow house just across the school, Beecher School.
We normally go and view the properties just so you know. If you see us driving around, looking around, that's us.
So I'm asking for a very simple thing. It's not a house, it's not a skyscraper. I'm asking for permit to build a shed, just a shed, 12 feet to 10 feet, so total square and 120 square feet. The problem, it might be trouble, is that I have only one place on my small land to build this shed and if you have, do you have card? You have or?
Yes.
Okay. If you will, please, this one's here. Okay, so also I want to show you pictures. Thank you. If you take a look at the picture, you'll see the land is down here, it's very steep, slow, and down this, down the hill, there is wet land. And also the size of this piece of land is approximately 100 to 100 to 100. So I have neighbors from third, from all sides, and the road on the front side. So I have no place to build this shed except of this corner, corner of house, corner of house. First, so this first reason why I want to build here, because as I said, there is no other place. And another reason, this corner is, needs to be filled because the water comes from the roof and goes down and goes to basement and this is just wet, wet place. So I want to build a shed just to keep all my tools, garden tools, you know, it's not, it's not for living, of course. It's not, has no, no entrance from house. Entrance will be from outside. And this will be not heater, not heating, not cooling, it's just a shed without, without the insulation, just walls and roof. Main problem roof, because roof will protect from the water coming down, coming down. What else? So, but unfortunately, because of the piece of land very small, I understand that I should ask you permission because it's distance from road, not enough and so it's, yeah, so I, so I asking to variance of these rules and I want you to take and do attention of my, of my, what I tell you, what I told you, all the reasons why I have to build here. And also, see, there is no, I have no other shed, it's only one shed, it's not, it's not second shed, only one shed.
And this is attached, it's attached to the existing building?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's attached to, because I used two walls from the house and I only, it would be, again, a very cheap project because I built only two walls and used two other walls from the house. But again, there is no any entrance from house, it's separated, completely separated from house.
So this is currently under construction, correct?
Yes, yes. I started construction, but it was very unusual for me, like, surprise because I think, I thought it's not a big deal to build a shed, you know, on my backyard. But when I come to office and eventually I have to pay $3,000 for review, $400 for the whole, so this shed which maybe cost maybe a couple thousand dollars, eventually, eventually, eventually will be two times more. All right, okay, I'm agree, this is rules, this is rules, I, I, I agree, we have to comply with the rules, of course.
And you also want to build a porch roof in the front of the house?
Oh, I'm sorry. Also, the house was built in 1940, it's very, when I bought it, it was in ugly conditions, either basement was not finished, basement or, so I, for, during year, for last year and this year, I continue to improve this, improve, so. Also, see, the front door, front door, I want to replace the front door and build a small canopy over door, it's not a, not a porch, just canopy, just canopy, maybe put a storm door, a storm door. If you, if you see in the plan, it's not even to extend, extend outside because I have chimney, chimney also has some, maybe, maybe feet, maybe more, no, of course more, maybe feet, foot and a half, it's extended to front line. So my canopy, I suppose, should be the same size from the chimney, chimney line. It's it, it's not.
So it's 40 inches wide by 12 inches from the house, correct?
Forty to, no, 12, maybe 15, it's, I cannot, I cannot give you promise it to be 12, but definitely not, not, no more than 15.
So you want it to be 40 inches by 15 inches?
Forty, forty because of the size of door, door, two inches, so I can't give you 40.
Just he's asking because it says 40 by 12 on your plan.
It's a small detail, but.
Okay, okay, 12, okay.
No, it's a small number.
I will, I will.
I don't think three inches is going to make a big difference one way or another.
So it's it. Do you have a question, please?
Karen, we have a footing inspection. Have you done the footing inspection?
Have not. But in this photograph, you can take and perhaps take a notice of the terrain on the lot. From about the middle of the house towards the back property line, it falls off steeply. When you're looking back there on the site plan, you can see his front yard, front setback line.
Way in the backyard.
Well, you know, it's about 20 feet from the property line. So we, the applicant and I and Christine in my office have searched for a place to put a garage on this site for some time and we haven't found one. And there's a well, more importantly, there's a drainage swale in the back that lots of neighbors rely upon to move their water around. And I don't think that if you, if you were to build outside the front yard setback and carry, whatever you're carrying to your, into your accessory building down a steep slope, it would be inundated with water in the spring. So, you know, I think that this is a modest request. I describe that, that same way as the, this front yard projection. It's a, it's an accoutrement that protects the door. This house is remarkably close to Beecher Road. And was in very poor shape and Boris has renovated the interior extensively and with building permits, high level of cooperation. And it is, I know the reluctance in which he compares the site plan and he does it at our request and we thank him for his cooperation. He may have spent more on this plan than he spent on the deck and on this structure.
Well, the good thing about spending the money on the site plan is now you have it and if, whatever else you want to do or if you want to sell the house, it adds a little bit of value to your property because you have a site plan. Otherwise, it's all a bunch of unknowns. So now you have a lot of knowns, which is a good thing. Yes, you know where your property lines are, yep. Sometimes aren't where you think they are. Sometimes aren't where you think they are. We've learned that.
So now I know where my sovereignty, if somebody do, uh, broke my sovereignty, I can, I can complain, but there is no borders, I don't know, where is my?
That's right, now you know. That's good.
The can, uh, canopy, I'm assuming it's, it's a roof.
What's that?
When it says canopy.
Yeah. Weather protection for that front door.
Any questions? Any other comments?
No.
Well, thank you and we'll go on to the next one and we'll come back and discuss your application and make a decision this evening. Next one is eight twenty-three Fountain Street.
Yeah.
Clara Munoz. Brad Minas.
Can I sign in first?
I'm sorry, um, did, he didn't sign in, did he?
Was, we told you to sign in, uh, second. Oh, I'll save a line then for him.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'll put him on number two, I'm on number three.
Good, thank you very much. You have to make this right, you know.
Hi, I'm here. Should I just go ahead?
Yep, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Richard Spear, uh, eight twenty-three, eight twenty-five Fountain Street and, uh, I'm here for my sister-in-law Clara Munoz to, um, discuss this here variance. I can start out by saying, are we all set?
Yep.
This is, building is very old. Not many like it around. I'm sure anybody that's ever seen it in or out would realize that. The walls are two feet thick, almost. Um, what's happened over the years with this property is the roof. It's a flat roof. It's, uh, great in hurricanes, pitiful in the snow. It, um, every winter I'm up there, almost getting killed, especially the last few winters. I, I can't do it anymore, I'm almost sixty-four years old. Uh, I can't climb across the roof with axes in, in each hand to get up across the ice and clear the scuppers. It's damaged the roof so bad now that sleeping during the winter in the house, you have to fear for an avalanche. But in between the avalanche, you have to put buckets all around the bed for all the water coming in through the roof. That's how bad it's gotten in the last year or two. Um, fixing the roof, I've done multiple times, no avail, same place. Um, it, um, because of other problems with the building besides the, uh, roof and the ceilings, as the exterior, especially in the front stairway, we get water through the stairwell into the basement. Um, and that's about all I can say about the existing building, except for the fact that the architect and everything have decided and planned a way to combat the water in the basement, the water everywhere. The way is to build multiple roofs. And in the part in the front on the stairwell, we're going to have to put a balcony and over the balcony extend the existing roof, the flat roof, where it comes over, if you look at this plan on the left side, you'll see where the stairwell goes up and it's all stone. So we want it to come out about, um, six feet. That's in the rear of the house, it faces the other property that I own in the back. Um, and I have no objection. And, um, I guess I'm going to flip to page two now, I don't know if you're on page one showing the existing, the old building. Page two would be the new building. It shows the pitched roofs. Um, the part I was discussing before with the stairwell, you can see where the balcony goes over and the roof would extend, covering the stairwell, stopping any more water from going down there by the use of gutters around the edge. And where it doesn't directly fall right at the door. There's nothing over the door, it just comes through the old stone and concrete and I patched it and patched it and just, you can't stop it. So it's got to be roofed. And the other thing, the only other thing we're changing on the building, we're not changing any of the dimensions of the building at all, it's the same. The only thing that's going to change is that roof is going to come out over the, the balcony. The other roofs will come over the edge a little bit as roofs do, foot or two, whatever they are. Um, but the building itself will remain exactly the same, uh, with exception to the stairwell in the back. The stairwell that goes up to the, there is a second floor now on the building, as you can see in the first picture, there's a second floor bedroom and bathroom. Okay, so we're not touching that. The bedroom is just going to become a stairwell. It's going to go, it's just going to come up to the floor, um, as it does, but the bedroom will just be a stairwell. The bedroom that's existing will be moved to the back of the house, if you notice, just past where the garage is. That's where the dining room is now. So up above the dining room would be the bedroom. Um, the stairwell will go up, uh, about four feet or four or five feet, just to get enough height to pitch the roof and put a pitched roof on top of that. Um, the other area on top is all open space at this time, we have no plans to do anything. We're just, I'm actually just doing this really for the roof. It's really to get a new roof on the building and to stop any damage that's going on in the building any farther. I've restored just about every inch of the house since I bought it. Um, with the exception of the.
Do you own the house?
Huh?
Do you own the house?
I did own it. I, I still live in the house with my sister-in-law.
When did you buy?
I bought it in nine, two thousand and five. And I recently sold it to my sister-in-law and I bought, purchased the property behind the house, the, the other property. And, um, uh.
And the height is still different than? Is the height the same as the other second floor?
The height of, oh, oh, that the second floor will be at the same height, except it'll have a pitch. It'll be the same height as the existing second floor that's there. The only thing that's going a little bit higher would be the stairwell. To be able to get enough height to put the roof on it and pitch it the right way, if you know.
Right, the roof is going to be higher, the toe, the peak?
The peak of the stairwell will be the highest point of the house, where you see the chimney and the drawing. That's actually the stairwell up there. That's going to be an open stairwell. We put the windows in for ventilation and design, but that's just going to be open, straight up. You come up the stairwell, you go to either the bedroom or the open space and that's all.
So is the, is the new height of the roof line going to, is that going to be within standards?
He hasn't, he hasn't asked for any relief for that.
Okay.
So.
So that's, that's, that's within zone.
Do you know, do you know how tall this will be to the top of the roof when you're done?
Uh, I can only estimate that, uh, it's about eight, sixteen to the top part of the, the highest roof where the stairwell would be. I would estimate about twenty feet from, you know, the ground itself, ground floor. I, because I know, I just know roughly that each floor is eight feet. So I'm just taking eight feet, eight feet, you know, for the, the two floors, the existing first floor, the existing part of the second floor would be about sixteen feet right now. So we'll probably go up about another four feet. So, well, four feet to the bottom of the roof and then a little bit of a pitch, so maybe six or eight feet altogether above the.
What's that?
To allow for a steep roof.
Okay.
You know, the other thing about that location is, it's very brutal in the winter time. It sits at probably the highest spot in Woodbridge, one of the highest spots, and it gets hit by every, every bit of wind that comes from the south, southeast, southwest. Uh, during the hurricane, I probably had twenty trees go down in the property, wrecked both my cars, wrecked, uh, came within inches of the house. It's, it's, uh, it's very high, nothing, and, and actually, it all got worse since my neighbor on one side, he's no longer there, thank God, uh, chopped down the whole forest and, uh, it, it absolutely ravaged every kind of storm. I'm getting conditions like I've never seen in my life. It's, it's like living in Antarctica up there during, during the winter. It really is. There's nothing around, nobody, but ice, wind and snow. There's no, and it's not sheltered, no tree, there's nothing that shelters it.
I'm so happy.
Uh, I, I, the rest of the pictures, I don't know whether you need them, it's just the architect and the builder have showed, you know, how they're going to join the building to the brick underneath, how they're going to, you know, the roof, you know, all that other, I don't know if you, if you need any of that? No?
We're not builders.
Okay, so we'll skip all that. I mean, I, I don't have much I can add, I just know that architecturally speaking, the house will look probably better than it looks now. And it's certainly going to be a lot better for us to live in. I mean, as a, as far as living there, it's, you know, it needs to be done.
We're not increasing the floor.
No, not at all, just, just really, it's really over the roof. We're going to end up moving to where the stairwell is, goes up, where the bedroom is, will be the bedroom in the back. That's the only thing that's changing. Uh, the stairwell will remain stair, well, the stairwell is half bedroom and half stairwell. It's a very small room. The stairway comes up, there's only room for a bed in there, you can't even put a dresser in the room. So it's, it's, you know, now, the bedroom will actually be in the back over the dining room, be a little bit bigger, that'll just remain a stairwell. The rest will be open, insulated, and that's all we're going to probably do this summer is insulate it all, put the roof, um, and, uh, you know, get it all so it's safe for the winter, you know. And then little by little, probably not this year because my finances are only so, um, I'm stressed, my business has gone the last few, like a lot of people, so.
Any, any further questions, Chris?
Well, I'm just a little confused as to what we're being asked.
Grab something to help.
Thank you. I knew you could.
This, this application comes to you under five point one point one of your regulations, which, uh, this is a, a, a legally non-conforming structure. Um, and by the way, quite a remarkable structure, um, uh, over, um, tight to, to Fountain Street.
It's a mini castle.
And high over Fountain Street.
It may look, because it's high up, but it's.
I, I think that, that, um, and, and it took me a while to understand, um, this application. Uh, and perhaps I can assist you, um, is that there is no, to my knowledge, no increase in footprint. Uh, and, and the applicant is here asking your permission as opposed for a, asking for any variances. It's important to know, to understand that because, uh, we do not have a site plan. Um, and, uh, and the site plan would not show any additions. Um, uh, the standards for approval are different than permission versus variances. And we can only, in our regulations, we can only do this when, um, when there's an increase in bulk, in, in, in the size of the non-conforming structure. It's a rather unique section of our regulations. Um, and the, um, the reason for this application is that this, the existing house has a, a flat roof and more importantly, it has a roof that is a parapet wall around it. So the structure looks higher and the roof is lower than the, than, than the side elevation would look. I believe, as I've come to understand what the applicant is proposing, is he's increasing the size of the structure. And whenever, whenever I say to him that you're adding a story, which is okay under our five point one point one, by the way, um, he wants to talk to me about the parapet wall and that, and he's not, in his own mind, is not, he's not increasing a story. Part of the story is already there. Doesn't matter for our purposes, uh, because as long as this overall height is not more than thirty-five feet from the average grade, uh, which he hasn't asked for any relief from, uh, and that he's only increasing, and he's not increasing any of the footprint whatsoever. He's making internal changes to the structure that, you know, where there's a bedroom, there's now a staircase and, and there's all sorts of that going on. But still okay for our zoning purposes. Uh, you know, it, we're, we're, we're increasing, uh, the height of this existing legally non-conforming structure.
I gotta say, Terry summed up what I forgot to mention, the walls, how they, the roof is actually under the walls.
It's a challenging reform.
That's, and I want to, and, and actually he summed up my explanation very well.
I could have had you do it, Terry. A half hour.
But I've always said.
Well, I think it's important that you said that so that everybody understands that it's on the record why we are here and what, what exactly five point one one is about. So thank you for doing it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any questions or?
No, I think Terry answered them all.
Okay, so I have no more? Should I wait or should I?
It's up to you.
You're more than welcome to wait.
We deliberate at the end.
Oh, okay, I'll, 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 a little break, come on in, that gentleman, like, over here.
Yep. We have one more.
Okay, great. Thank you, here.
Oh, I think he just went to get a phone call.
I left number two for him.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for.
Okay, next one. Twenty-eight Selden Street. Hi. Please tell us who you are and why you're here.
Uh, yes, hi, my name's Ed Balansky, sorry. And, uh, my company is Pixels Express, we've been in business for ten years. Uh, originally we're in Norwalk, we just moved up in December of this year to, uh, Woodbridge, Connecticut. Uh, I actually am a Woodbridge resident, so I did that hellish commute for a hell of a lot of years and I had enough.
December of this year hasn't happened yet.
What?
December of this past.
I said December of this year hasn't.
December of last year.
I know.
Okay, all right, sorry. All right, um, we, we were kind of, Bob and I, uh, my partner Bob Arlene, who is not here tonight, um, we were looking for properties and we actually found one in Milford we were going to settle on and, um, actually, Jeremy from the, uh, the, what you know, Development Commission actually showed us a, uh, a storefront property, uh, right next to the bowling alley in Selden Plaza. Uh, we were kind of unaware of the zoning laws and we, uh, when we were looking at the space, we noticed that we didn't have any windows. Uh, we had like two little tiny windows and then we had also, uh, uh, you know, a, a large area in between the two windows that we could not, you know, that no one actually can actually go in. I just wanted to give you a picture of what we saw when we first came there. And we're a large format printing company, so I have a large format stuff, so I'm sorry. Get that out. So when we came, came here and we were looking at the property, um, this is our property here. I don't know if you want it on camera or whatever, but this is our property here, and this is the bowling alley. So when we went here, we, we saw that we have, the, the signs in question are these three signs here. Is that correct, Terry? Yeah, okay. These three signs, which was under the sign, and otherwise, there's an orange wall there. We said, you know, I said, Bob and I are in a large format printing business. We can actually print signage, or we call them actually presentation boards, because we actually sell these to our clients. And they're actually things that we present to our clients and they do presentations at their, at their workplaces and stuff. We had no idea that we were violating any laws. I had an eighteen hundred square foot mural on the wall and I had a huge sign on top that says bowling. So never even thought of it, asking, always should think of that, we did not. And, you know, it's, it's, I'm, I'm sure a few of you guys are business owners and stuff, and it's hard enough doing business in Connecticut as it is. I mean, I have a little thing from Channel Eight News, is that Connecticut voted the worst state in the country of doing business with taxes and zoning laws. So, it, it's just, it's just, we never expected the, what happened. So, that being said, I received two letters in the mail, one regular mail and one registered. And you get a registered mail, you go, oh, I'm in trouble, I'm doing something wrong. So I, I looked at that and, uh, I called up Terry and asked him, uh, what, what's going on? I don't understand, why am I in violation? He goes, well, we're supposed to have a five-foot square footage of signage outside every building. And I'm like, uh, well, how, I go, well, how did, how did my signage come into your, you know, you know, viewfinder? And I said, uh, so I asked, I go, who, who, and, and Terry said, he goes, I already received three complaints about your signs. I'm saying, who complained about my signs? I mean, I've gotten, believe it or not, when I came here, we do mostly large promotional and advertising agency things. We never thought we were gonna get a lot out of the storefront, but quite frankly, we, from that storefront, we generated almost fifteen thousand dollars in business in our first, you know, four or five months, from people looking at that and coming in and walking in and actually doing some work with us, which, which surprised the hell out of me, quite frankly. And, uh... What? Oh, Channel Eight could be wrong, but it was also on Channel Three, Seven. It was, it was a lot of channels, Terry. I don't wanna, I didn't wanna go crazy with that, I didn't, but...
But they're odd channels.
They're always odd channels. Could be even channels too. I didn't go to, I didn't quote Fox on this one, so I'm sorry. Anyway, uh, so, our business is presentation boards and large format printing. And essentially, uh, when we came in here, we, we, we looked at it and we said, just, I just wanna make something that looks like windows, because everybody else has windows on this whole plaza. And that's my second little large format sign. And this is the Selden Plaza, all the way through. Our company is located here. And as you see, everyone else has windows, everything else is essentially, I tried to, I made very subdued, black signs that wouldn't catch attention from the roadside. If you look at this thing over here, I can pass it around, it says Selden and Bank Street. This is where you're coming up the street. When you look at this, it looks like it's windows. And you really, and there's no really large, uh, printing on it until you get really close to where we can actually read it. And that's what was my intention from the beginning. There are also presentation boards, so they're actually mounted outside on Velcro. So, I mean, I can take them down, it's not, it's not a huge thing for me to do. It's just that it would, it would be a hardship for me since I don't have windows. And obviously, if you have windows, I guess you can display whatever you want and have people inside, you know, lights inside and have people look at it, but I didn't have those. And again, like I said, I didn't realize that because I had a huge mural. I'd never even thought about it, quite frankly. We should have. So we've been here since December first. I've had, I can't even tell you how many people just come in and complain and just say, Ed, the artwork's exquisite. I love the pictures, I love the stuff, they, they've all walked in and I know you've had three complaints. So, I'm asking, I mean, like, I, I was told that I can't identify the person that makes the complaints unless they put it in writing. But I'm willing to guarantee, it's either somebody who was allowed to take, made to take down a sign or a person that's a competitor. So I, I mean, I know you can't tell me that, but I, I know you can't tell me the people, but it's, it makes no sense that if you look at this picture, how, how my signs are just like glaring attention anywhere. So, uh, next thing, and this one, I definitely wanna make perfectly clear. I am not complaining about the signage on any of these properties. In fact, I sell signage. I would like them to have more signage on their properties. But you have Crest Automotive, Amity Motors, you have the Hardware Store, you have Bike, they're, they're all over the place. I, and I, like I said, I, I'm not saying these signs are illegal, I'm not complaining about the signs, I'm not issuing a complaint, so it's not for me there's a complaint on these signs. But there's a lot of them that are definitely within, uh, the laws of the five-square-foot area. And my signs and, and, and my presentation boards and my displays are all part of my product. And you have here, you have the bike shop with all the bikes outside, you have Crest Motors with all the cars outside, you have, uh, Amity Motors with their cars outside. It's my product, that's what I sell. It would be a real hardship for me not to have that signage up, which I never thought would generate a lot of business anyway, but it did. And, and that's where I'm at right now. I have a retractable banner stand here, and if you want me to put it up, I can. But what it is, is I can bring these out every day and place them on, on front of the property, just like the bikes are being placed, just like the cars are being placed, just like everything else is being placed outside. And that's what my product is. So I'm asking, you know, to reach a favorable outcome, I mean, like I said, or consider the work on my wall as artwork. As it is, it's all photography, it's all design, and consider it as artwork, just like the mural that's next door to me, which is eighteen hundred square feet. And rest of my case.
A little bit about what happened?
Sure, well, we had, we've had numerous complaints about these particular sign boards. And, by the way, I think you're in the old gun shop spot, as I recall, right? And, you know, they had a, a flashing rope and sign that was a constant source of, of distress. And so I, I'm not so sure that it's your competitors that are, that are complaining, but nonetheless, your, your signs...
Was it somebody that took down a sign? I had signs taken down before, that might be a people, that, oh, oh, no, I'm just saying. You said it wasn't my competitors, so...
You know, I, it, it, um, the point is that, that we respond to complaints and if the signs are larger than you're allowed, you get a letter. The, um, in, in, uh, on, on your sign board, I, I recognize numerous of those signs, by the way. This commission has heard probably more variances for business signs on Amity Road than almost any other application that you've ever had.
Excuse me, Terry, it's on Selden Plaza, it's actually removed from Amity Road, it's one step back. So, I mean, I would really need signage for that, it's not on Amity Road at all.
I'm, I'm aware of your address.
Oh, you said Amity Road, that's what I'm saying.
I was describing what, what this commission has heard about signs on Amity Road.
I mean, this is different, if I may say. This is not an application or a request for a variance. This was because of a complaint you had and so it's a little...
Well, this is formally, this is an appeal of the zoning enforcement's, this officer's decision. I, I do believe that, 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 you know, it, it, it can get you relief if you should disagree with the methodology that the enforcement officers taken, by the way. The, uh, I believe that, that each and every one of those signs on your last board showing, um, other signs in Woodbridge have been the direct result of actions by this board over time. They have allowed, there, there, you missed a few, by the way, there was a...
I, I didn't, I didn't go, I, I actually found out a bunch of them.
Right, right.
And I didn't put those in.
The, you know, the, the car dealer has a Leaping Jaguar, you know, statue, you know, that was an action by this board.
It was a multiple month celebration.
Correct, right. The, um, uh, we, by the way, have, have, have learned to, you know, to take some comfort in this board resolving our business needs of signage reliably for our businesses in, in this community. The, uh, uh, this, you know, I, I can't help the fact that there's no windows in this building. And by the way, we have a window section before we, before we make windows. We should talk because there's rules about signs and windows as well.
I know, and I have a couple of pictures that's over twenty percent signage that's in the windows too. So I, it's, I know it's there. I'm not, like I said, I am not complaining against anyone putting up signs. I make signs and I like to have, and here I am, a large format printing company that makes large format signs and I, I'm in a, you know, place that only allows a five-foot by five-foot sign.
So, so, so the, the bowling, you know, sign up on top of the bowling alley is, is, it was an action of this board, I believe in the seventies or in the sixties when it, when it was constructed. The, um, uh, the, in two different occasions on, um, in, um, over the past nineteen years, I have, as your enforcement officer, made the decision that, that, that Merle, uh, that the bowling alley painting of the pins and the, and being struck was art. The second instance that I decided that something was art and not a sign was at One Bradley Road. It's obscured now by some shrubs, but there's a stainless steel metal sculpture of a one. And, um, you know, in both cases, I know, I guess I know the artists. The, you know, it was Murph Shaper's, uh, wife that was the welder on, on the, on the numero uno. The, um, and I, I think that's a reasonable decision to make in my, at the time that I made it and I, and I, and I still think it's reasonable. I think here, uh, whether it's your, without this other signs, these sign boards, your, I haven't measured it, but your Pixel to Press may very well be compliant?
It is, I checked that out. Actually, uh, the Alpers were really, uh, and I can't even say, they're one of the best landlords I've ever had. My God, they're, they're great people. And they did, they're making that lot like beautiful thing. And, uh, they, they loved this and they were right behind me with this and said, you know, they can't believe this happened, but in any case, that is definitely a legit sign, because they told me what I had to put on top. And they said, you, you, the top thing on the, what is it called, the cornice or whatever you wanna call it, it had to be certain, because all of them had to be the same and I, and I knew that.
Right. So, um, I, I mean, the, the, you know, we can talk about the windows that you do have in those signs. However, um, I don't feel that I'm authorized to set aside any portion of the zoning regulations. And, um, uh, and I think that, and that's why I, after, after hearing the complaints, I, we always just take a complaint as a, as a request for service and we go and look and see. Both Christine and I had a look at this. And I guess there's a photograph of it, I think in your package is, it might be this one. The, um, and, and, uh, we have not been able to resolve this matter. And, uh, we bring it before you for your judgment.
So, I've got a few different questions here. One is, so it talks about wall signs. And as I look at this, there's, you know, depending on how you're considering different things, you know, five or six different things, it might be considered signage.
Yes.
And so are we really talking about just the three that are on the wall and the Pixel to Press is under some different thing, or is all of this lumped in one thing?
I believe that, without measuring it myself, that the Pixels to Press sign is probably of it, in of itself, compliant with our regulations. And, uh, I, I think the regulations anticipate the neighbors have access to the same sort of signage. People have to, your customers have to locate where you are. So it's a, it's, it's unders, it's under the, undersized for what the expectations are. And, uh, and, and I, this, this order does not contemplate, it is only addressing these three signs. I did not take any action on, on, on any window signs, which could be, could be discussed, but I, I think the big, you know, the, the issue under discussion is the three banners, the three banners.
So, again, to clarify, the Pixels to Press, is I read it right, you can have one wall sign?
Correct.
Right? And so that would be the Pixels to Press and anything, and the three other ones will be above and beyond that one acceptable wall sign?
It seems to me that if, that, you know, that, that the size of the lettering on a sign matters if you're going to identify for the, your, your customers that you're over there by the bowling alley. You, you have to know from a parking lot sign, and so you, I don't think you can really read these, these three banner signs until you get up, pretty up close.
Yeah, it'd almost be like ten, fifteen feet away. And like, like I feel, when you look at the photograph up close, but you gotta realize it's, it looks just like almost any other window. And that's why, I, I just wanted to have something where people would come up and like, and it's, and it's in a corner. And, and quite frankly, we didn't think we were gonna drive business by these signs. But however, we've gained fifteen grand from these signs from just people walking in doing photographic stuff that we never even thought about. So it's kind of a hardship for us. I mean, I, I, I've seen a couple of zoning board things on TV on the, on the thing, and it's like, I know when it's unlevel ground and you wanna put a, a structure somewhere else because it's unlevel ground. Well, I have no window space. I, I, people can't look into my place, which, when you look into it, there's signs all over the place and it's huge. I mean, with that type of signage, but you can't see that from the, from, from the, when you're walking by.
That gets to the other question that I wanna pass, Terry, is that he spoke about, and I was, the bike store has bicycles out front, which is their product.
Right.
His product is signs. And how do we differentiate between a sign, shall we say, a sign qua sign and a sign which is product, an example of what he has for sale?
It's an interesting Rubik's Cube that you, that you, uh, that you raise. However, all that, all those bicycles, all that product is supposed to be taken in, in every night. There's a difference.
The challenge with that is the automobiles aren't.
Right, the, the Crest Automobile, Amity Motors.
I'll tell you what, I never thought of it that way. I never thought of the bicycles as a sign or the automobiles as a sign. It never occurred to me, I don't know why. It never occurred to me that those were signs and they actually are signs.
And even the new tractor place, and I saw his hearing here, you know, and it's like, those, those are all like those trailers and stuff like that. You know what, I see he has that five-by-five-foot sign lit up, he does, it's, it's a good sign. But it's just like, but all his, all his vehicles are signs.
So, so to follow through with that, and he had mentioned the, and I forget what you refer to it, but the pull-up signs, which is how we always refer to that.
I have, I have retractable banners, what they're called.
Right, retractable banners.
And I can, I can pull one of the, I can pull three of these out. And actually, I can take those signs, they're on Velcro. I can pop them off the wall and put them back every night if you want me to. I'd rather not do that, that's kind of crazy to me, but if you suggest that I do that, I will do that and bring them in every night. But I, I have to tell you, I mean, I've looked at the hardware store and he's got stuff out all night long too. And, and he's got window signs and, and I'm like, and I, and I want him to buy more signs. I don't want him to be regulated on that. I just don't understand why I have a, a presentation or a display company and I can't put my product outside.
But I don't think it's the point of the type of business. Correct?
A regulation that don't provide...
You don't say you're a sign business, you're a landscaper, you're a car dealer.
So are there other things that, you know, to go back to this Rubik's Cube of sign qua sign versus sign qua product other than the, that we should be considering other than if it were... than if it were product, it needs to be taken in every day, are there other considerations?
I mean, that's, that's a provision in which that, that outside stuff is, is had.
If you reasonably bring in all the automobiles every day, that wouldn't be a reasonable thing because you couldn't do it, but, but the hardware store does bring in their products in the front of their store every day, otherwise they would disappear.
But the pallets are still there on the side with all their product on it every day. And, and like I said, I can bring these in every day, I can actually do that, but to me, it's, 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 it's not like, and I didn't do this with fluorescent orange, I didn't do this where it would be attracting, in fact, when you see this shop from Sullivan, if I could pass it around, it's, it looks like every other store on, on that plaza. I try to, I try to conform that because I didn't want to attract attention that way. Purposely done that way as a design.
So you have a window though? There is a window?
This, this, I have two tiny windows and doors.
You can see it in this photograph.
There's small room.
Okay.
So, in, in between, it would look like almost a spa up here, if you look at this photograph here, it would look, that would be my place, only it would have a little bit smaller window signage. And, and like, and I said, I wouldn't have taken the space if I couldn't have done that. Unfortunately, I didn't like, I didn't think that bureau, I, I just didn't even comprehend that that would happen.
And this was all because, Terry, somebody came or whatever.
Three people.
People, people complain, we, we receive a healthy dose of complaints.
No formal written though? No formal written complaint by anybody?
No formal written complaints.
And all the other?
And we, we don't frequently get those.
I was going to just ask.
Because people, people are conflict averse, they would much rather, people don't like to be regulated, by the way, not just yourself, but lots of people.
I understand.
Okay? And people also don't like conflict, and they'd much rather have me raise the issue. You're describing how I spend about a third of my day. It's, it's the reason, pardon?
That's crazy, that's crazy, I mean, well, that's what it is.
I'd be happy to describe to you the kind of complaints that I get.
Sorry.
The best one, by the way, is I believe it's about leaves in the fall, because apparently the wind blows leaves from one person's yard to another, and it's frequently, I get phone calls about what I'm going to do about this condition.
Oh my God.
So, back, back to signs. People complain about signs, people have an opinion about signs, there's, there are some businessmen who think that their business cannot survive without them, and I speak to those people frequently. We recently redid our sign regulations that, to become more, more, to have more signs than we previously allowed. We previously were extremely parsimonious about signs.
But you would have to walk by these signs to actually see the signs, otherwise, if you were driving by, you would think they were like those. I mean, and, and if, and if there's a problem with the verbiage on the signs, because I don't have a real lot of sales pitch on them at all, I can make it have nothing on it with type, so I could just have, I could just have.
It's not really, let me give you a little background on, on me. This is my last meeting for the Zoning Board of Appeals. I started twenty-two years ago, had a four-year break, but I've been on this board for eighteen years. And I've owned a business in town for eighteen years, and I've had many conversations with Terry about the fact that I need more signage for my business. And we have updated the sign regulations, I personally am not happy with it, I don't think it's gone far enough, I think we should allow more signage, I think we should be more flexible with signage, but that's Town Plan and Zoning, not Zoning Board of Appeals. So my signage at the store, if you look at my storefront, I have the full width of the building, I have a sign the size of yours.
I, I know.
It's, it's disproportionately small.
Right.
Relative the amount, to the amount of space I have here. On the back, I have the largest legal sign I can put to direct people into my business. Okay? It is much smaller than I want, I would love to have an A-frame sign, I would love to have a much bigger sign, I'd love to have a lighted sign. I can't have a lighted sign on my building because I'm adjacent to a residential neighborhood, and that's not allowed in the sign regulations.
I, I understand.
So it's a challenge.
I really do.
It's a real challenge. We've had, as Terry said, over the years, so many sign applications, I'm going through them in my head now thinking, I forget about them because there are so many applications for signage on, in Woodbridge for businesses. And it's one of the reasons why the regulations were updated, they need to be continuously updated, there need, there needs to be much more work done on the sign regulations, but the challenge is, what you have is more than what I have. Because I'm, I'm compliant. And I may be, I may be one of the only businesses that is truly compliant. I don't have signs in my windows that face out because I believe that's not legal.
Correct? I mean, it is, on 20%.
Yeah.
I wrote, oh, I got this down.
There's, there's so many little, you know, narrow gaps, you really, it's really limited. And I drive around town all the time and I could pull my hair out complaining about all these businesses that have excessive signs, but I don't because you know what, I want businesses to thrive in Woodbridge, and it's not my place to complain about them. You know, I, mine is legal, mine is, in my opinion, too small, but I've been there eighteen years, you know, so it is whatever.
I can sell you some big signs.
Yeah, and you can, I can't put them up.
Well, here's the thing, I, I understand that much, but you sell sneakers.
Yep.
I sell large format printing. And, and had I known there was this type of regulation, I wouldn't have moved there, I would have been in orange, I would have been in Milford. Now I'm here, I can move out of here, I got a two-year lease.
I know.
But, I mean, what, and I didn't think the success of the signs were going to be a big deal at all, quite frankly, it turned out to be a real big deal. And people like that, I have people coming in saying, oh my God, I never thought this could be done, this type of photography, this type of this, and, and, and it's a, it's a driver, which I didn't know about, and people actually have to walk by it to do it, so.
I still have people in, in Woodbridge who come to my store and say, when did you open?
Yeah.
Eighteen years ago. Really? I never knew you were here. I go to the hardware store all the time.
Can they, could his signs be put on a, on a freestanding frame, is that?
That's what, I have to do this, and you want me to open this up?
Is that something that's within, that can't be done either?
There's a provision in our zoning regulations where you can put it.
Up for a certain number of months a year.
Oh, yeah.
By, by, by.
If you consider a sign, not a product. Yeah. But if you put, but if you put it out on, on a post.
I'm not drinking the Kool-Aid on that.
You're dead. Terry, if you were to put them out on a post in the day and take them in at night, is that legal?
Right, they're on Velcro, you can't take them.
I could take these signs in every night if I had to, and put them back on on Velcro. Or I can put this type of sign on every, every night.
Yeah, but on Velcro on the wall is the same as a sign on the wall. I mean, the fact that they're overnight is immaterial.
Is there a sign on the, on the, can you leave it for eight hours and then take it in?
It's not fine, perhaps it's such as that.
We're, we're getting into the fact that while the sign regulations are improved, they're not, they're not perfect yet, there's still work to be done.
And unfortunately, that's not my work.
I know, it's not.
Right.
No, it's.
So, okay.
I didn't.
Well, it's okay.
No, it's all right, they gave me a couple seconds, but it's what I can do. I'd rather not, but like I said, I have those on Velcro, which are a lot easier to take in and out.
But if Terry, Terry says he can't do those either, so.
Oh, we can't?
There, there's a provision where, with a permit, that you can do it for a certain number of.
It's not a sign, oh, this is a product, that's what I'm trying to tell you, that this is like my car going outside on my wheelbarrow.
So, I, I'm sorry, I, I understand the words that you say, but I guess I think of it as a sign, and I don't think of a car as a sign. Right. I, I understand the product issue because the bicycle shop and the, and the hardware store is supposed to be taking everything in, and, so.
What about vehicle signs? Oh, a Crest Automobile is way over the limits on everything. No, 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 I meant actually a sign on your vehicle parked on your property.
I don't, if it's on a licensed motor vehicle, it's not, it's not a sign, the licensed motor vehicle.
What about a flower sign? What about a flower sign? Flowers for sale sign?
It's a sign. Is it a, is it wish you could sell something, you have something to sell?
Yeah.
Terry, that would not be standard, even if it's a freestanding thing, correct? Sign.
Okay.
It only because the video is taking it. I mean, I could put that, this is two-sided, so I can put this anywhere. This is for a funeral, but, you know, I can, I can take this in every night, I can put three of these out every night if I had to, one sidewalk.
But that's not gonna, that won't, right, that won't matter, it's still a sign.
It's not, it's, it's a pro, I'm selling this, I sell this, I sell the stand, I sell the print.
So, so, so if you're to bring it, take it in every night, I suppose how much different then is that, that bicycle or something in front of the hardware store, there's a, there's another section of the regulations that will allow you to have your product out as long as you remove it every night?
Right.
So it goes back to the three there?
So the three signs there, I can actually take with a Velcro, I can take them off and just put them back on every night.
Not on the wall.
What?
Not on the wall.
Why not?
Why not on the wall?
Because that's a sign. Well, you just said, this is your product, this freestanding thing.
The sign, those presentation boards that you have in front are my also, they actually appear in airports all over the country, those big, big, uh, place, I mean, those are actually things that are actually placed in the middle of, they're actually tuned together to hinge together and they, and they sit down in airports and in definitely in area. I mean, I sell those a lot, I mean, that's what I, mostly what I sell is those. I'm sorry, I know it's hard, I, it opens a can of worms and I'm sorry about it, but.
There's going to continue to be sign conversations in town, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about Selden Plaza because it's not an empty road, so should there be directional signs in Selden Plaza and things like that, it's, it's, there's lots of challenges.
Do these three signs say anywhere, I can't see it, I'm sorry, the name of your business and when?
One of them does. One of them has a sports thing that says pixels to press, the other ones are just photography, it says photography. And I can, like I said, I can take anything that says pixels to press off of that instantly. I can make another one tomorrow and put it up. If that would help, I would do that immediately.
So, if it's a sign, it's too big. If it's a product, it can't, you gotta take it in every night.
You gotta take it.
Do I have to do that?
Pick your poison.
Oh, wait a minute, no, if I, if I have a product that I can take it in every night, it's better than having nothing, right? Right? But if it's a sign, which I can help all the other companies in Woodbridge, let them have signs that, and like I said, and to me, it baffles me that someone would complain about it.
I, I just think it's interesting what it makes sense.
It looks like windows, I mean, it makes absolutely no sense, unless someone is, was told to remove a sign and that's why they wanted, that's why they want to do it. I know it's mature.
We don't know, we don't know anything.
Well, it doesn't matter. So what, what you just said is very instructive, if you can help other businesses in Woodbridge, because in effect, by, by, by acting tonight, you could change zoning regulations in Woodbridge that are having to do with signs. See?
And that's a bad thing?
It could be.
Chris, is that a bad thing?
Well, I, I, the thing, the thing is this, when it comes to sign regulations, that's governed by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, not by our commission. So, I'm not a fan of doing an end around on what other commissions' responsibilities are. I, I was on Town Plan and Zoning for two years and we did work on the sign, signs, for the two years I was there, we didn't finish it, it took later, but.
And I know you've taken up enough time, and I, it's, it's, the problem is I sell these things, it's not, it's not like, it's, that's the only thing that's different, it's not like a sign advertising your company, it's, it's also a product.
So is the product you sell, would it be that exact sign? Or, or does that sign?
It's customized, it's customized for every client.
But what I'm trying, is that sign showing us a collage of all the pictures that you would make individually?
I'm sorry, yes, that, this is, this is a combination of all photographs, it's a collage.
Right, so if you, so are you telling us?
On the other side, it's just one picture, if you want me to do that.
Well, no, what I'm trying to get to is, is what you sell, the large format, whatever, those individual pictures, or is it that whole big thing?
Oh, no, it could be. It's the whole big thing, you pick it up, you take it home.
No, no, that, so it's the whole big thing?
The retractable banner stand.
By, by those where I work all the time.
I, I, I don't think that we should be in the business of.
Relating content of signs, by the way. It's signs. And once we get into content designs, we get some protection against free expression and that sort of thing.
No, no, it wasn't. But this is not a sign, by the way, this is a retractable banner stand, it's not a sign.
Okay.
It isn't.
Because you could sell that to me and walk out the door, everything that you got there, including the bag.
Right, and it's customized, just like one of Press Automobiles is customized for every client that has different options in it and stuff like that, I can sell that.
Okay.
All right?
Good.
Sorry, it took so long.
How much does a?
Well, the retractable, this retractable banner stand goes for about a hundred and fifty, the hardware, and then the banners I'll do, it depends on who I'm dealing with, but like seventy-five, eighty-five dollars. And if this one's a two-sided, then so. All right?
Okay.
Thank you guys, I'm sorry, I've been so long.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak on behalf of any of the four applications? We will close.
Close.
Close those. I'd like to proceed, do you want to go back and go, you want to go forward?
Sure.
Okay, so let's discuss the first one, please, the Gurones, eleven ninety-four Racebrook Road.
All right. I, I, I mean, it's, it's a pretty modest variance, it's within, basically within the footprint of the house, it can't be seen from the road, the house has been there for a hundred and ninety-seven years. For me, it's, that's, that's an easy one, I would, I would say, go ahead.
A motion?
A motion, a motion, yeah, to, to approve that one.
Any other discussion? All of them, Chris?
Cool.
All those in favor?
I'll give the second next.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you. The second one? Forty-seven Beecher Road?
I think we're in the same position.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's a property that's non-conforming, you can't build really anything on this property without proceeding a variance, and it's, it's reasonable for someone to have a shed to store their lawnmower so they can cut their lawn and their lawn tools in, and this is a reasonable place to put it, so I make a motion to approve.
Okay, and the second?
Second.
Second?
And I'll add to that, the front porch overhang is a very modest overhang, and it's, I think that's also an important feature of a house to have to protect your front, front door from the elements.
All right, I'll second that too.
And also the fact that you're enclosing it.
Right.
And attaching it within the building.
Yep.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We're all set. Good luck. Thank you.
Later. Yeah, you got to talk to Terry, probably tomorrow.
Thank you.
He wants to go and start working. It's mosquitoes, you know, one go out there.
Okay, Clara Munoz, eight twenty-three Fountain Street.
I'll make a motion to approve this because it's, it's a necessity for, to maintain this property, is to put a proper pitched roof on it. A flat roof in, in, you know, what, in this case, it's just going to end up destroying the property, so I think it's really important that they do that.
Okay, I'll second.
I have to agree. It's not expanding the non-conformity of the footprint, and it's making the home more livable from what, from what you presented to us.
So, a question for you, Terry, for the other ones, we've had a clear hardship, right? It's within the setback, and this is different because it's a five dot one dot one, we don't have to say anything about a hardship or anything like that of approving it.
Regulations do not require a demonstration of hardship, he's here seeking your permission to increase the non-conformity, the legal non-conformity, to be more non-conform. And if this was a, an addition in the footprint, you know, it, it is not seventy-five feet, by the way, from Fountain Street, you know, it's eleven feet from Fountain Street, it's like, it overlords Fountain Street, so, but he's not making any changes. He is going. He is going, he's adding, I believe, in my way of thinking, he's adding a second floor. And I might add that he is, I believe responsibly. He may not be aware that he's being as responsible as he is, but, but he has a low pitched roof. You know, it's like a 3:1 pitch. You know, in Woodbridge, it's very common to have a 12, 12 pitch. So, you know, I don't think that would look good on your, on your property. I think that this is a, probably is, except with the additional story where he gets actual rooms that he doesn't have now. Still okay. But, you know, this is the kind of, I mean, the other alternative would be to have him put a roof on what he has now. He would not get any additional thing. But, you know, he's, this is an allowable thing with your permission. No demonstration of hardship required. Much different.
Other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Lovely.
Pleasure to come here. Live, Jerry made me come now.
That's often the response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I enjoyed it.
Mr. Bunske, 28 Selden Street.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So just coming to see you.
Thanks.
His sister-in-law thanks you too.
She's welcome.
Cookies and milk?
Yeah, I mean, something, yeah.
I just want to see the phone.
Yeah, stay for the phone.
So do we.
I mean, I am on TV.
Yes, you are. All right, I'll start. I think this is a tough one. But I think I come out where Chris, you know, said basically that we're not here to change zoning. That really isn't our role. And so I'd say you can't have the signs. You can make freestanding things and that's your product and put it out every night and take it in every, or take it out in the morning and take it in every night in concert with other businesses who put their products out front and take them in. Okay? I can buy that. But not attaching it to the wall because then it's a sign. I'm not really sure what else to do with it because as you've pointed out, some of the product you sell actually are those stands. It's kind of a stretch, but, you know, I can see the argument.
So let me, let me respond to it in a few different ways. That what currently is going on appears, at least to me, to be a violation of the sign laws. And there is no reason for us to say, but that's okay. Because it's not okay. Right? And especially because we don't want to legislate from an appeals position. That's not the right way to do things. The question of when it becomes product versus when it becomes signage? You know, if it was mounted on the wall but still taken in every night, would that be signage or product? If it's freestan... That's a separate question that we're not confronting here today. But I would also just, as a businessperson who uses signage and particularly as a marketing person, it would make more sense to me to be, if it is product, to be rotating the product so that people get a better sense of the different products that are available. It would be more effective marketing. So I would suggest both strictly from a ZBA viewpoint, it's signage and we can't say that it's okay. And for him to figure out what proper product is, he might want to think about better ways of presenting his product.
So you would not be in favor of putting out a freestanding product in the daytime? If I understand you correctly?
Actually, I do not have an opinion on that at this point. It's not what's before us.
No, it's not what's before us. But, but what I'm trying to do is sort of parse between this thing. And I guess it goes back to our enforcement officer. Would a freestanding sign, in your opinion, because that's really where this all comes from. And I try to blame you, but rather to say, within your responsibilities as the enforcement officer, would you see a freestanding sign as a violation of our signage?
So, we're mixing metaphors again here.
Okay.
The product versus signs.
Yes.
Right? I think signs evoke a message. I think that, that if I were asked this question, I would go to the other section of our zoning regulations that is not the signed regulations to see what businesses can put out in front of their place and react accordingly. I would prefer to do that in prospect as opposed into, than in respect, by the way. I would, you know, it's easier sometimes, you know, it's common to say that, you know, it's easier to ask for redemption than permission. But I would like to participate in that conversation of just what is this? I think that, you know, it's very important for us not to regulate content of signs. You know, whether it's a, it's a political sign. For example, when all these zoning board appeals signs that have been up since, largely since the 70s, and they change business owners, the signs don't change. You know, the, the content in the signs change as the owners change. I do believe that this speaks to a larger planning issue that we have in our community. And that's that we have a significant business population of Selden Plaza that is not well-served by identifying that this business plaza is present and it's possible for the casual driver of Amity Road not to know that all these businesses are there. And you might be aware that the town has sponsored a directional, business sign directional program. They hired a consultant. Apparently they had needed money for the consultant or for the signs. They chose the consultant. And now they have a program that they would like to be able to direct people to businesses that we have in Woodbridge. I think that Selden Plaza suffers from, from, from being able to identify it easily from Amity Road. I think there are other businesses in Woodbridge that, that suffer from it as well, but not as poignantly as the businesses in Selden Plaza. It's a nice little incubator of small businesses. We've had businesses that have gone, started there and gone on to bigger, better places as their needs allowed them to. And there's a, there's great fabric of Woodbridge businesses there. I think that's a larger, a planning issue. And, and this is just a symptom of that sort of thing. I don't, I agree with Chris that I don't think that, that our conversation about signs in Woodbridge is over. There are passionate individuals. We've, we've filled this meeting room on signs further up Amity Road where... From no other purpose I've seen in a zoning matter, this room filled in that way. So, signs have their, 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 people who speak in favor of them and there are some people who are, they are just the drakes of the existence and can't imagine that a business couldn't survive without their signage. It's tough to say that to a guy who makes signs, by the way. So...
But it sounds like it needs to possibly be revisited by another commission, like you suggested. There's still more work to be done.
Let me, one, respond a little bit more to your question. Hank, you can then add another observation. And, you know, I'm very conscious of that, not legislating content, right? But, but I find it an interesting question of what's a sign versus what's product, right? And to the extent that you're putting out the same full-up every day, that starts feeling more like a sign than like a product. If you're putting out your, that a product is in different formats at different times, that feels more like product. So I'll just leave that as, I'm not sure that we're the people to decide that. I think it's pretty clear we're not. But Terry's comment about this should be an ongoing discussion, I think, is an important discussion. And that's just one thought about it. And I'd say that if I were a businessman who was trying to sell signs, I would be very focused on trying to lead a productive discussion about what is effective and permissible.
Holden, A, could you revisit my office in Town Hall directly below us? In the public hallway, you would see a sign that directs to the fact that you're at the building inspector's office. That sign is supported by a saw blade. And it leaves no mystery to where you've arrived to because it's like the barber pole, it's like the shoemaker. Actually, we need a shoe, by the way. I had this theory of thought, by the way. Chris, maybe you need a shoe outside your shop.
I have actually thought about that. I thought about, could I get a big inflatable shoe and put it on the roof for the holidays?
A holiday shoe?
No, just are there ways that I can do that with, which are within the zoning regulations?
Watching somebody complain?
People, people complaining, yep.
I had Terry on speed dial.
Then you do.
So Terry, so we are deciding if he has to pull these signs down or if he's allowed to put freestanding signs up, basically. If we decide that he has to put the sign, take the signs down, you're saying he's allowed to put freestanding signs up? Is that my understanding?
Well, as in so many answers to so many questions, it depends.
Agree, disagree.
I think that, that what's in front of you is a, you know, does, has the zoning enforcement officer erred in the depiction of these as signs? And are they larger than are allowed by the black line of the zoning regulation? I make strict instructions, so that's, that's what I think that's in front of you. I think that, that the product issue is another zoning regulation nearby. And, and I would hope that, that, that before he does that, he would look carefully at the zoning regulations and perhaps even consult with us to make sure that he does because nobody likes this. So I think that, I get it that, that, you know, whether one person's bicycle is another person's movable sign or movable display, I mean, not use that, that word, sign. So it must be pretty irritating, you know, to bring in those bicycles every day. And I imagine that you do it so that nobody steals them.
I think about the hardware store. There every day, they bring out all those garbage cans and all those wheelbarrows and they bring them in every night. And I think, well, that's a lot of work.
So...
But they do it.
And, and we make provisions for that in our regulations. So I, I think that, I don't think that, that you're actually deciding that tonight.
Nope. That's the next step. Potential. Depending on how this goes, that could be the next step.
So then I will move that we denied the appeal. And I think that's probably about all we really need to say, right? And people who've listened will know that the appropriate thing is probably if people want to change it, they can find an appropriate venue, just like we had in our previous meeting.
Absolutely. You agree with the decision that the zoning enforcement officer...
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further comments? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay.
We have minutes from April 17. I'll just bring the change over to you.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. And then you have May 7, May 8, I mean. Right?
We have no minutes.
So you didn't say anything, right? Any further business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I just want to say thank you, Chris, for all your years of service, all your hard work and all your insight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very much appreciated.
Maybe I can help out Town Plan and Zoning with the signs as things go forward.
I think it would be nice.
I think that's a coalition over there.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. Good job. Okay, see you next time.
Okay.